Good evening and welcome to the Winterfield School Committee Meeting of Monday, January 25th, 2021. This meeting will be held live and by way of Zoom conference. Patty, can you please call the roll call?
Yes, Ms. Barry.
Yeah.
Mr. Boncory.
Here.
Mr. Capabianco.
Here.
Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Ms. Swol. Ms. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Okay, now we'll be doing the Pledge Allegiance. At the end of the Pledge Allegiance, I'd ask if people could remain standing for a moment of silence for retired Winterfield Police Detective Robert McPhailen, who recently passed. His funeral was today. And Ms. Barry, would you leave us in the Pledge Allegiance this evening?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of the United States.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Patty, do we have any public comment this evening?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, we don't have any general information, recommendations, no delegates and visitors at this point. Okay, the minutes, minutes of January 4th, 2021. We have a motion to approve the minutes of January 4th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Boncory.
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the motion? Patty, can you roll call, vote please, to approve the motion?
All right, Ms. Swolpezer.
You're muted, honey.
Suzanne, you're on mute.
You're muted.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I have a question, and it's not, it's just a question. It has nothing to do with, I agree with the minutes. It's, Ms. Eccles, when, when we see that the system-wide total is 66.98% of spent and the general fund is only 46.69%, does that mean we're in good shape?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, that, we have to stick with the minutes and go through the, the agenda. If, if you have a question that's on topic to the agenda, we're not at-
I thought that was part of the minutes. I'm wrong?
You, you're, you're asking questions on the minutes? If, if they're correct or incorrect, is that what you're?
Yeah, I was just asking.
Okay. I'm glad you were able to get that answered. I apologize. I, I thought that was more appropriate for financial and business procedures. Okay, warrant number SVW 21-12.
Excuse me. Ryan, I'm sorry. I, I have to do a roll call on the minutes.
That's who you're gonna pull up.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on to financial and business procedures, we have warrant SVW 21-12, the amount of $360,561.80. Can I have a motion for SVW 21-12 and that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the warrant SVW 21-12? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. We have a second warrant this evening, SPW 21-13, in the amount of $723,776.09. Can I get a motion for SVW 21-13 and that amount?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on SPW 21-13, the amount of $723,776.09? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Abstain.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Next, we have budget transfers and payroll for the amount of $3,535 and also $367,406. Can I get a motion for both those amounts for that budget transfer?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Matucci? We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Boncory. Any discussion on the, on the budget transfer? Hearing none. Patty, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Buildings and grounds. Do we have any this evening? No. General functions, reports, we have no subcommittee meetings to report back on. We do have a superintendent's report this evening, Ms. Howard.
You're on mute.
Some people enjoyed that for the two seconds it lasted. So, thank you, Mr. Perrin. So my school committee report tonight, superintendent report, will start with the internet issues that we're having. So unfortunately today, we had another day in which we experienced unstable connections to the, to the internet, which definitely interrupt our phone systems. As most folks know, and I've kept the committee updated as well, we had a changeover in our phone systems in early January. What we have found is that those particular phones that were added to our town and our schools certainly were much needed. We had some very antiquated phones, at least in the schools, and I'm sure that was the same around the town. So we had new phone systems put in, and what we have learned is many of those, if not all of those phones, have been connected to our internet service. So our server that sits in the hub of the coming school that allows us to access our Zoom meetings and, and provide our students at home as well as in school with their instruction, the phone system seemed to be taking the bandwidth. I've learned a lot about technology and about bandwidth. What bandwidth is, it's actually the amount of internet that we have here, allowing us to meet the needs of our students in class and at home when we're using the internet. We believe that is the major cause of the disruption in service. I worked all weekend with Comcast. This is not a Comcast issue. We have sufficient bandwidth for the school district, and we made sure of that last June when we were planning for remote and hybrid instruction for this year. However, the, the outage of the phone systems, and we think there may be some other smaller issues that are within the internet, that are drawing the internet and sort of saturating our bandwidth. We've been working very closely with Comcast, with engineers from retrofit, which is the technology company that manages our servers, and with the town to try to figure out why this is happening. So over the weekend, we spent all day, actually all day Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday until 7:30 PM to try to remove the telephone systems from our server and put them on another server, separate from the towns, so that we would not have the interruption of the internet. When the internet gets interrupted in the school district, the phones themselves actually get shut down. So from the school's perspective, not only are we not able to consistently provide education through the internet to our students in class and at home, but our phone systems also go down. Some folks believe that if everybody has a cellphone, and so that shouldn't be that big of a deal. In a school system, it is very different. Our phone systems are also our emergency contact to every single classroom. They connect to the police station, to the fire station. So without telephones, we're at a significant risk for safety in the schools. And last Friday, when we knew that the service was going to continue to be interrupted, we turned all of our students who were supposed to be in-person learning back to a fully remote setting. We had hoped that that would be rectified over the weekend, and actually, we were right there at about 5 o'clock when I sent, or 6 o'clock when I sent emails to the parents and to our staff members, that we were fairly confident that that was fixed after many hours of working with the various engineers and the phone company. Unfortunately, sometime between 6 PM and 8 o'clock AM, something else took place, and we now have the engineers back onsite working on that. We were up and down pretty much all day long today, which is extremely frustrating. It's interesting to note that prior to that, from the day we opened until January, on or about January 19th, we did not have any interruption in our service. Our service was running very well. We didn't have, even with all of the, the excess of Zoom meetings we were doing, we spent the time to, to learn how to shut down the HD mode of Zoom meetings to not overburden our bandwidth, and that was working well. So I'm confident that the engineers that have been onsite, that will continue to be onsite throughout tonight and tomorrow, and for the length of time it takes, we are hopeful that by tomorrow afternoon, we will be back up and running. I did inform parents today that tomorrow will have to be a remote day for all students again. We did not want to do that. However, we feel strongly that we cannot risk another day of instruction, interrupted instruction for our students. So that's an update on the internet, and it's, it's been quite challenging and, and pretty frustrating for all of us that have been on the ground working on this. And, and technology is not my specialty. However, I can tell you I've learned a lot about bandwidth and switches and ports over the last several days. And hopefully, after tomorrow, I won't have to think about it again. We will update parents and let them know. Wednesday is a remote day anyway for our students and teachers. And I know there was some question out there, and I guess if you're not into technology, which I was not, and somebody said, well, our internet is down in the school, so everybody's gonna have to go home, and we're gonna have to do full remote learning, that might not make a lot of sense to people. Because if your internet's down, how are you gonna do full remote learning for everybody? Because don't you have to have internet to do that? When we went fully remote last Friday, and when we go fully remote tomorrow, many of our teachers will be teaching from their homes, and therefore, they're not using the school's internet. And our students who are at home are at home, and as they are on a regular remote day, or when we were fully remote from September until January 4th, they were using the internet service in their own home. So as you can see, when you are fully remote, there is very little use of the internet within the school system. And the engineers will be onsite, and they don't need us to be actively on the internet for them to continue to figure out what the problem is, because they have been remotely watching us, and they can go back and look at the data from the past several days and see what happened at certain times of the day when the bandwidth got saturated, thus shutting down our ability to run our Zoom meetings and connect with our students, and, and most importantly, have access to our telephones for people to call in, but also for us to call out and to call with inside the structure of our schools. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions on that, but I wanted to make sure that folks were up to date on that. And a couple of other items, in-person school committee meetings, the committee has asked me to investigate that, to see if we are able to do that. Do we have the space to do that, the technology and, and whatnot? As I told you about the internet issue, I've spent several days focused in on only that, dealing with Comcast and our internet service and the telephone providers, and it has literally taken almost every minute of my day. I do need a little bit more time to give you a complete scope and sequence of being able to have in-person learning. I can give you a bit of an update on what I have found so far. In terms of the space, as everyone knows, we have the Neil Shapiro Auditorium, in which we certainly can spread out in that area amongst ourselves as a committee, if need be, keep ourselves six feet apart. We have technology that we can set up that will allow us to be heard when we are six feet apart. We'd have to have somebody running that technology for your meetings. So we would have to bring in a tech support person to be able to manage that piece, so that we could make sure that it's set up correctly and that it is working, so that the folks at home would be able to hear everyone, and if people needed on the committee to still stay remote and potentially be zoomed in to the auditorium to participate as a school committee member, that technology person would be able to make sure that those folks were online and able to be heard. I do need to continue to do some work with our legal department. We worked somewhat with the town's legal department on the orders around gatherings and how those affect schools versus, like, the town council. So there are two separate groups of people, and the order number 57 that had come out talked about public and private gatherings. So it appears that the intent of that order was to permit schools to reopen, notwithstanding the limitations on gatherings. So where a lot of venues can't have more than 25 people, certainly that does not pertain to schools. However, that, that particular order, it, it's not clear in and of itself whether or not the school committee is part of the gathering order, because they're not students, they're not teachers, they're not groups of people that need to be in school for that reason, and therefore would be excluded from that order. I guess it, it could be possible to consider the school committee part of the school, but I would like some more feedback from our school's attorney to let us know whether or not that, that meets that ordering, that order of gathering. Also, in the Department of Education's most recent guidance for student groups and school events, there's a quote, and I, and I can share it with you, that talks about whenever feasible and to the maximum extent possible, the gatherings should be moved online for anything that exceeds 10 people. So I do have a question out to the commissioner, and I hope to hear back from him, you know, soon, whether or not that would pertain to school committees. So I would ask for a little bit more time on this, or you could take the information that I have now to help guide your decision about when you would like to consider whether or not it's feasible to do in-person school committee meetings. Not sure if folks have any questions on that.
Lisa, do you want to give us an update at some point in the future? You can email us prior to our next meeting or when you feel as though it's ready to be ruled out?
Sure. And again, you know, I would like to hear back from the school's attorney. We did hear from the town attorney, but there is a difference between, you know, town council meetings and other town governing board meetings compared to the school, you know, obviously the school committee, and I also want to hear back from the Department of Education as to whether or not their guidance on gatherings and groups not exceeding 10, whenever possible, really fits this as well. And then I, I think I can better inform you of my thoughts. So I can certainly do that, hopefully by the end of the week, if not early next week.
Mr. Matucci?
Yeah, I don't, it was my motion. We voted last meeting. Do the first meeting in February. That would be great if we could, but obviously there's some other things that are going on here. So I guess we could just move it to the second meeting. I don't know if you want to do a motion or just, for now, just say that. But obviously, the, the vote that was taken last meeting is probably not gonna happen for the first meeting in February. So I don't know if we need to revote that, or how you want to handle it.
I don't think we need to revote it based upon the fact, the fact that it was, it was logistics-based, based upon what Lisa came back with as far as space and as far as logistics. So I, I think that we'll shoot for the second meeting. If something changes in between, based upon the legal opinion of the school committee's attorney or the Department of Education, we can revisit it at that next meeting. But for now, I think the vote was based upon the logistics, if I remember correctly.
It was, yep.
Another update. I know folks are aware that we have a special election coming up. Typically, the town, the community uses school buildings for the election. This is a special election that was not anticipated, and it had, actually has two election dates to it, March 2nd and March 30th. Those are days that we are actually in school, and the school committee calendar has us as such. And given the fact that we are back in hybrid learning and will continue to be so at that time, I did work with the town council and spoke to them about the impact of us either not having school on those days or turning those days into remote learning. And I presented them with our side of the concern about either of those options. And therefore, the town council took a vote, I believe, and, and Mr. Boncory can correct me if I say it wrong, but took a vote to move the polling locations on those two days from their sort of natural environment of the coming school and the high school to another location which they are working on. I do believe that that's in the best interest of the schools, and I thank the town council, because it is work on the town council's end. It has to be posted to let folks know. There has to be an evaluation done, and then there has to, it has to be posted to let folks know that the polling location would be changing. However, the impact of changing the location versus the impact on student learning was pretty clear. So I thank the town council for making that exception to this. I don't know if you wanted to add any more to that, Mr. Boncory?
Yeah, it hasn't been voted on. It was sent from new business over to committee. Will be voted on at the next meeting. After our conversation, I brought it forward to the council, and it looks like we will be not yet, you know, posing on the school department, and we will be doing it in other places, but it will not be voted on until this next meeting.
That's why I always check.
Yeah.
I just want to be clear that it's the superintendents of the school department that I have not considered as that. I'm completely recusing myself from this conversation. Thank you.
All right. In, in a special election, you only need 10 days to notify them of a change, but we're still gonna do it within 20 days of a regular election. We have to notify them of the polling changes and, you know, sign warrants for the election. So we're gonna do that all first meeting in February.
Great.
And, and the school department will certainly help make sure folks, if they show up to the schools on those days, will put proper signage up and have folks available to help redirect them to wherever the location is decided, if that should be the case. Next thing was flu shots. As you know, we worked really hard to get flu shots for all of our students by December 31st, which the Department of Public Health for the state of Massachusetts had said we had to do. We, we ran into, you know, a timeframe issue with a lot of our families. As a parent of a young child, it is, I'm very well aware of how difficult it is to get a doctor's appointment for your child in person, to get regular physicals and regular immunizations, and for the state to then require us to also get our kids flu shots was just a curveball that, as parents, one, we weren't expecting, and two, we weren't overly thrilled with. Of course, the flu shot is important, and we all agree with that. However, in the middle of a pandemic, to expect families to get doctor's appointments was somewhat outrageous. The town stepped up. Of course, Meredith Hurley being the lead on this, and worked with our school nurses to pull together flu clinics so that we could help families get those flu shots in a timely fashion. The state had informed us that regardless of whether a student was a fully remote student or an in-person learning student, if they didn't have their flu shots by the end of December, then they moved the date to February, that we weren't supposed to let students into school. Just another semi-outrageous, you know, last-minute curveball. The Department of Public Health and the state apparently realized that. Perhaps it was the pressure of school districts. Perhaps it was the pressure of parents. Perhaps it was just a snapshot of the reality of what we're living in, and they decided after we did two flu clinics that that was no longer a requirement. We then had to notify parents it was no longer a requirement, knowing that some of our parents would not be overly happy that it's now been taken off the table. Parents can still have their children, get their flu shot. We will still be happy to take that paperwork and note it in your student's file, but as of right now, that is not required for students to continue to learn. So we were, we were happy about that. Vaccines, we know Meredith, maybe we'll talk about that in a, in a minute. I just want to share a screen. I talked to the school committee about the dashboard and what does the dashboard mean. So every week, we are asked to, although it's not required, to report the number of COVID cases that students who are in-person learning have here in the community of Winterfield, and to give them that information on a weekly basis. So every Thursday, I am to call, or one of my nurses is to call into the department and let them know how many students in the Winterfield Public Schools who are in-person learning have been confirmed to have COVID. The Department of Education takes that information and puts it on their website. I want to be clear with folks that it is not mandatory for schools to call in. I have had several conversations, if not weekly, then sometimes twice a week, with the Department of Education about this data, as well as a number of other COVID-related questions. I asked the question if every school district in the Commonwealth reports this every Thursday consistently, and I was told that the answer to that question is no, because it is not required. I asked why it gets posted on the website, as such, that it's, it's information that's given out by the Department of Education, and it appears that it is sort of a document that would be very accurate, which I would hope that the information that's shared is accurate, but it sends a bad message, because it appears that everybody is reporting this information every week. I can tell you that there have been weeks since we've, since this particular information has been requested of us that I have not reported. And it has been because I've gotten to the deadline, and there has been another priority that has come in front of me, that has disabled my ability to get to the Department of Education before their 5 o'clock deadline. If you don't get there before the 5 o'clock deadline, you are simply reported as having no cases, when in fact, that may not necessarily be true. Over the, the last, I want to, not the last report, but the week before the last report, the Department of Education reported two weeks' worth of Winterfield Public Schools information, and it was not broken out as to how many students were diagnosed with COVID that were in-person versus those students who were remote. The only thing that the Department of Education publishes is the students that are in-person. So there was an error in the reporting on the Department of Education's side. I've corrected that in speaking with the department. However, they don't adjust that webpage with the corrections, ever. They make a note of the corrections and they put it in a file. So I just wanted to make it clear to people that, one, there was an error in the reporting made. Two, it has been corrected. Three, you will not see it on their webpage, because they don't publish the corrections. However, anyone who wants to confirm that it has been corrected can call the Department of Education and ask to speak with Ann Marie Strohneck, and Ann Marie will confirm that that has been corrected. I also spoke at the last meeting about a dashboard, because folks here were interested in knowing how many of our students are diagnosed each week with COVID. Again, it's, the information changes not just daily, but throughout the day. And as we collect the data of how many kids in our school have COVID and how many of our remote learning kids have COVID, we take our information directly from the department, our community's Department of Public Health. On top of that, we do have families that call in to say- On top of that, we do have families that call in to say their children, um, have been given a positive diagnosis of COVID. That's information that we absolutely act on, but the information that we keep in our record as reported cases of those that come through, um, the town's Department of Public Health and get reported directly to Meredith's, Meredith's office. Um, Patty, can I share my screen? I think I can, right? Yeah.
I'd be able to.
So this is, um, a document and I don't, is it up yet? No, there we go. Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a document, uh, that Tara Bowie, who is our COVID in-school nurse and I work on during the week. And I'm going to share with you, it's actually four weeks of data, but I'm, but the first block of data that says week of 12, 24 to 1, 6. The Department of Education asked us to collect two weeks of data during the school vacation week. So this is how it was reported to the Department of Education. Uh, but it's also how we keep our own internal documents. And when we were on a week's vacation, um, we just took these two weeks and put them into one. The way we, um, categorize it, if you see on the left, it says W H S and it'll say hybrid and then it will say fully remote. Any students or staff that we become aware of that have been given a positive diagnosis of COVID. Those are the numbers that we put in these columns. So if you look at Winter Public Schools during the week of the 24th of December through the 6th of January, you will see that we were notified that two staff members tested positive. And five, uh, um, two staff members that were in-school teaching, um, in the hybrid model, because we, we do have some teachers who teach fully remote, but it's a very small handful. The majority of our teachers are in-person learning. Two teachers during those two weeks had positive tests. And five students who were actively participating in hybrid learning were diagnosed with COVID. Our fully remote teachers, we had no teachers who are, who are, uh, designated fully remote, report that they were positive. And we had three students who are at the high school, uh, participating fully remote, have a positive diagnosis. It's important to understand that these are, uh, this is data that is collected because somebody went and had a COVID test. And once we are aware of whether a person has COVID and they're in our school, it prompts a whole contact tracing investigation. And sometimes the students are tested positive on a Friday. And if they were an in-person learning student on Monday and Tuesday, that means we had not seen that child since the prior Tuesday in school. And it, when we find out that they are positive, they are obviously not, uh, allowed back into school. So we do this for each school building and, um, for both staff and students. So in the week below, as you could see, this is the week of the 7th to the 13th. So we report either Wednesday night or early on Thursday to the Department of Education. And you can see here, I've noted that this is, this is reflective of the data that was corrected to the Department of Education. So I've corrected this week and the, uh, actually in the weeks above, I didn't point that out. But these are the number of cases that were reported to us within that timeframe. And then last week, up until Wednesday of last week, which was the 20th. These are the cases that we had within, uh, reported to us within the school. We also, in our own system, we track the close contacts. And that means that if you look at this last block, we'll stick with the high school. One teacher and one student during hybrid, you know, that were hybrid or in-person learning. And how many close contacts they affected, we keep that internally because by the time we finish the contact tracing, um, it's information that's, uh, useful to us, not necessarily, uh, useful to many other people. And the Department of Education doesn't ask us to report any of that data anyway. Uh, but we do have that information on hand, should we need to report that, uh, to anyone. If you look at the in-school transmission column in, starting from the very top, in-school transmission is determined when students who have been, uh, diagnosed positive, uh, a, a positive COVID diagnosis. When we find out who that particular child is and we do our contact tracing, where was that student sitting at lunch? Did that student, uh, was that student, uh, considered a close contact to anybody? If they were not close contacts to anyone, then no student is notified that they have to, um, stay home and quarantine. We notify every student that we determine based on our seating charts, based on how long students had masks off during lunch or snack. We have a seating chart for lunch, for snack, for every single classroom. Whenever there is a case that somebody was less than six feet for 15 minutes or more during a school day i- and they become considered a close contact, they are notified immediately. If any of those people that were close contacts of the positive person then become positive themselves, more contact tracing is done. And if it was because of a person in school that they were less than six feet away from in, was a close contact of, then there would be in-school transmission. So I'll give you an example and I'm going to make the example up because I think Meredith had to do something like this for me. If we had a lacrosse team and one student on the lacrosse team was diagnosed as COVID positive and they had had lacrosse practice two days before or the day of their lacro- uh, their, uh, positive diagnosis, we would do the contact tracing for that whole lacrosse team. And if we found there were kids that were considered by the nurse to be close contact, those close contact kids would have to quarantine by the total number of days required by, uh, CDC. If one of those kids who was tagged as a close contact and kept out of school, then tested positive because of their interaction with that other lacrosse player, then we would have in-school transmission. Because it would be likely that the kids on that lacrosse team who were with a positive student while they were practicing, became positive themselves, it is likely that they would have been, um, uh, acquired COVID from that interaction. And in-school transmission is athletics, if you're on an athletic team, a classroom or a cafeteria. And Meredith, please jump in and tackle me if I'm, if I'm not being clear on this. Because I want people to be understanding of what in-school transmission means. Just because these five students at Winter High School who are in hybrid learning had a positive diagnosis of COVID, it does not mean that they got it from being in school at all. It could be a household transmission. When it becomes something that could potentially be tied to passing COVID while in the school building, you will see this, not based on, by my, uh, deciding, but based on contact tracing by the school nurses and the town nurse confirming, you would see this change to a yes. If it changes to a yes, that's a prompt for us to really pay attention to it to make sure that if it gets any larger than one incident within a school, that's when we have to stop making determinations about whether or not we close a school, whether we close a classroom or whether we close the whole school district because of in-school transmission of COVID. So I, I don't, I know it's complicated because it's taken me a long time to understand it. But this is how closely COVID is being watched within the school system and, and outside the school system as well to ensure that all of the protocols, all of the policies that we have put in place, that our teachers are enforcing very, very strongly. It'd be, it'd be, uh, very difficult for kids to walk around the school for about two seconds without a mask or within six feet of each other, without one of our staff members correcting that to ensure that we're following the guidance to make sure we do not have in-school, uh, transmission. And Meredith, if you want to jump in and, uh, correct anything wrong, uh, or, or, you know, a skew that I've said, please do.
Sorry, always with the mute. Um, no, I think that you explained it really well. Um, we, you know, we, we look at the connections. Um, one of the first things that we do is get the list of, um, and we, I really mean Tara Bowie, um, is the lead on this. You know, she gets the, the kids that are in the direct circumference of a child that has tested positive and from the dates we've determined that would have been in-school during their infectious period. So, um, we also look at the, the, what was going on. Um, so for example, we know that anytime that a child is unmasked is our highest, our highest risk. Um, so we immediately start with any sort of lunch or breakfast breaks, um, things like that. That's usually where our starting point is and then go, go throughout the day from there. Um, Tara and I usually start our days together or start our mornings officially together, kind of reviewing if there were any cases that came in during the course of the evening or, um, or, you know, if there were any, any potential spread, um, from the kids that had been on our quarantine list that were known to quarantine so that we can kind of jump ahead of that as quickly as possible. So we really have our eyes well-trained on, on the cases at this point.
Thank you, Meredith. And then just, I have only one more update, um, to give you and that's athletics. Um, so quick, quick update. We currently have, um, 118 athletes participating in winter sports. Um, that's varsity gymnastics, JV and varsity, boys, girls basketball, JV and varsity, boys hockey and varsity, girls hockey. Current records, uh, girls hockey at three and O, boys hockey, one, one and one. JV boys hockey, uh, one win, two losses. Boys basketball, oh, and four, but they're working extremely hard because I have seen them and witnessed, uh, witnessed them in the gym masked up and, and really working hard. Girls basketball is three and one and gymnastics is one and O. Um, something pretty exciting, Mara Door, um, is a handful of points away from reaching the prestigious, uh, 1,000-point club in girls basketball. We are hopeful, uh, that Mara will do that at home uh, so that her parents can be there, given the restrictions of the M I A A in which your parents cannot attend an away game and watch you. Uh, and that would be difficult, uh, not to be, uh, in person to be able to see. So we're, uh, hopeful that Mara hits that this week. Our athletes, coaches and families have been, uh, follow, following the established protocols um, and really, really supporting us and being understanding. Uh, and I think that's why we have been able to, um, continue to have our teams up and running. It really speaks to our ability to do so. Uh, and Brian Donnelly and his digital video students have been helping to film the games so we can live stream uh, on our YouTube channel. And this is not, the, the live streaming is something, um, I'm used to from college sports with, with my daughter. What, you know, you're playing in another state, they get to live stream so you can watch from your living room. Um, we have not had that opportunity in the high school, uh, with our sports, uh, very often. It's sort of been part of a club and not necessarily, uh, something that we do. Uh, it is new for us. Um, we were able to get some funds to get it up and running. We are using volunteers to do the games. Uh, we cannot do every single game. We're doing as many as we can do. Um, I know all parents would like to see JV events and varsity events. Um, I think people have to understand that we're not paying somebody separately to do these. Um, these are some of our students that are doing them. Uh, and, you know, obviously, uh, with, with technology and, and what it has been in the last week, it's been difficult. Um, but we are working hard to get as many of these events streamed uh, as, as possible. So, um, I just think that's a, a pretty cool thing that we've been able to do. Um, it is new for us. And the very last thing is, um, did a little begging with the Department of Education who had some air filter systems, um, movable portable air filters. Uh, they leaked out that they had some left that they could distribute to schools a- and at no cost. Um, so my, uh, frontline to Anne Marie Strohneck, I called her and said, hey, um, you know, if there are a few left, we could use a few. Um, we're thinking about rooms, we could put them in any small space where a teacher is either working one-on-one with a student, perhaps in our locker rooms, um, which could be air filters and, and, uh, you know, the little car smelly filters too. So, uh, having them there. Um, so we're getting those for free and 20 to 25 should arrive, uh, in the next couple of days. They're $350 machines, uh, that we're getting for free. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. We'll distribute those as soon as they, uh, hit the ground. And the principal will make the decision along with the custodial staff and Mikhail Filipko, who is our facilities manager, uh, who's worn several hats in the past, uh, couple of weeks. Uh, he has been a key to the telephone system, uh, fixing and, and, and setting up, uh, you know, extensions for people. So, uh, hats off, uh, to Mikhail uh, for helping us out with that. And that is the extent of my short slash long-winded superintendent report.
Thank you Superintendent Howard. Uh, Ms. Galvin, do we have any further homeschool applications this evening?
We do not. Nothing new has come in.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Howard, can you bring us to any personnel matters we have this evening?
Yes, we just have one appointment and that wa- was to fill an ESP position. We have hired, uh, Daniel Bertrand uh, to be an ESP. Uh, he is a college graduate, uh, and he, I, he does some coaching in Saugus. Uh, and we're happy to have him on board, supporting our students. And that is all.
Okay. Now moving on, we have, uh, a sick day buyback approval needed for Nora Grimes. Can I get a motion to approve a sick day buyback?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell, any discussion? Hearing none. Patty, can we have a roll call vote for the record?
Ms. Barry. Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Uh, next up on the agenda is to consider the option, uh, to renew or to extend the fourth year to superintendent's contract. Uh, we anticipate a vote this evening. Can I have a motion?
Motion to extend.
Motion by Mr. Boncory to extend the one year.
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, uh, we want to begin, if, if we could add to that emotion, that motion that we begin the negotiations for that uh, one-year portion of the contract. Uh, we may also want to consider extending further, uh, during those, uh, discussions. So we don't have to come back and revisit them again in June. So would you mind amending that motion, uh, Mr. Boncory?
No, uh, I would not mind amending it and I, I will amend it to, uh, send it to contract negotiations. For the option of extending for one year or longer.
Okay. Can I get a second on that amendment?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell on that amendment. So the motion, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, Patty, can you call the roll call?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay. I see no unfinished business. We'll move on to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Uh, Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please, for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry. Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Kapabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Night.